... non-conforming use to allow in addition to an existing duplex, modifying the second condition, removing the term shingle siding. I think that would answer the applicant's desires to use a cement-based product that's not a shingle.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the expansion of a non-conforming use with the modification to condition two, removing the words "shingle siding." Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Slack.
I guess I'd like to make a motion to add a fourth condition, that the entire house be painted the same color after the addition of the new siding.
Is there a second to add that condition? Motion and a second, and I think, well, Commissioner Gisselman, do you have some discussion on that addition?
Yeah, just for clarification on Commissioner Slack's amendment or addition, would that be then, the applicant can paint the addition to match the same color as the existing house right now, correct?
I think the intent is that the applicant can paint to match the existing, or they can paint it an entire new color of their choosing.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on adding a fourth condition to that the entire house be painted a single color. Is there any further discussion on that? If there is none, Commissioner Kronzer.
Can I just be clear about the fourth condition? Is it that we're requiring the whole house to be painted, or that the whole house is painted the same color?
And Commissioner Slack, maybe you can clarify that.
The whole house be painted the same color, so whether they're matching the existing color with the new siding, or whether they decide to just paint the whole thing pink.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I think we can vote on adding that fourth condition, and we can just do a voice vote for that. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. And is there any further discussion on the overall motion to approve the expansion of a non-conforming use? If there is none, I think we can vote on that, and clerk, please call the roll.
Slack.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Gisselman.
Aye.
Fender.
Aye.
Six-zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on that item. And our next item for discussion today is item number eight, the 26th and Stevens Apartments at 113 East 26th Street. That is a new apartment building. Staff, it's Hillary DeVore.
This is the 26th and Stevens Apartment Development located at 113 East 26th Street. There are three applications before you this evening. One is conditionally is permit to increase the height of the building. The second is a variance to increase the maximum flurry ratio of the building, or FAR. And then the last one is site plan review for a new mixed-use building, ground floor commercial space approximately 3,000 square feet with 70 dwelling units located on floors two through five. And the site is located in the C2 Neighborhood District, and then also in the pedestrian-oriented overlay district, specifically in the Nicollet-Frelin area, which has additional standards than just the PO overlay itself. The site has been and remains a superfund site. There has been contamination on the site going back to when it was first occupied as a dry cleaning establishment and then a gas station. Since 1994, there has been remediation efforts underway on the site, and those continue today. As part of the redevelopment of the site, some of the existing equipment that is currently located in a garage towards the southwest corner of the building will be relocated into the building as that equipment, the soil vapor extraction system, and also some of the monitoring and maintenance wells need to be observed into the future. And so until the MPCA can close out the file on this, on the contamination efforts, or remediation efforts, I should say, excuse me, that equipment needs to remain. So going into the applications, and I will just say that there have been two previous applications going back to 2005 and 2006 on the site, both for the original, or the earlier application was for 14 dwelling units, and that is when the site was zoned from the R2B district to the C2 district. And then that project never came to fruition, and then in 2006, a 23-unit development was proposed and approved by the Planning Commission, and as you can probably guess, that project didn't happen either. So tonight, the first application is the conditionally use permit to increase the height of the building. What's allowed in this district is four stories or 56 feet. They're proposing five stories or 61 feet. However, most of the building is actually capped at that 56-foot height limit. Based on construction types, you are able to build a fifth story into the fourth, into that 56-foot height limit, but it does exceed both as the corners of the building have been increased to 61. So because of that additional height, at the two corners of the building along Stevens, the overall height of the building is 61 feet. However, as you can see, the majority of the building is at that 56-foot height limitation. This is the site plan for the building. The property lines, this is that south property line. This is 26th Street out here, and this is Stevens, and then the alley is on this side. You can see that the building is designed in the shape of an alley with the bulk of the building being located towards the corner of Stevens and 26th. The building is set back 29 feet from that south property line. The adjacent use here is a two-and-a-half-story residential dwelling. The building at the closest point to that west property line is 13 feet. This is a three-story mixed-use building. It was currently the chicken shack. It's been, it's under renovation, or the renovation is complete, now putting dwelling units on those upper levels. And then the rest of the building is set back significantly further from the west property line along the alley. The other buildings across the way, across Stevens, are one- and two-story commercial buildings, and there is a three-story apartment building that is located on the rest of the block. There is a three-story, however, that top floor is, there is a mezzanine in that building, so it's a very tall three-story building. There is a seven-story building located in this area, the large area of the OR3, or what's purple on your screen, that is MCAD and then MIA in the north half of that property. Then there is a four-story building, Arts Quarter Lofts, that was constructed in the early 2000s, is a four-story building located there. We are recommending approval of the conditionally use permit today. We feel that the height is compatible with the surrounding area. In the way that the site has been designed and the building has been laid out on the site, we feel that it would be compatible. There are additional standards that you need to evaluate when increasing height versus access to light and air. Again, that closest property is that two-and-a-half-story residential building to the south. Again, there's 29 feet between those two. All other properties surrounding this are either separated by the alley, which is 12 feet, or a public street, and so access to light and air would not be diminished by the increase in height. The next finding that you look at, then, is shadowing of residential properties, public spaces, and existing solar energy systems. There are no solar energy systems near this site. The shadow study indicates, and that is in your packet, that there will be shadows cast on the residential properties, both to the east and the west. In that shadow study, you can see the differentiation between the 56-foot and 61-foot height limitations. The four-story building, a four-story building that was 56 feet in height would have similar shadowing impacts as the proposed building that is primarily 56 feet in height with only the northeast and southeast corners of the building at that 61-foot height. The next finding on a scale and character starting uses, and I explained what is surrounding the site and the different heights, every, the height of buildings ranges between one and seven, and this is proposed to be five. And then preservation of use of landmark buildings, open spaces, and water bodies. Located north of 26th, there is the Washburn Fair Oaks Historic District. Given that this area is densely built out, whether this building was four stories and 56, or five stories and 61 feet, views from the properties on the south would be blocked by either of those two buildings. But we do note that the intent of the standard is preserve public view quarters and not views from public property, or private property, excuse me. So for those reasons, we are recommending approval of the conditionally use permit. The next application then is the variance to increase the height of the building, or excuse me, the flurry ratio of the building, or FAR. What is allowed in this zoning district is a 1.7 FAR. The development qualifies for the 20% density bonus for mixed use, as more than 50% of the ground floor, not including the parking areas, that's not included in the GFA, is commercial space, and so they do get that 20%, which brings it up to a FAR of 2.04. They're proposing 2.41. Sorry, I keep switching. As you can see, there is a wide array of zoning classifications. This map has a 600-foot buffer from the project site. It ranges from R2B up to C4, with OR3 and R5 being the, OR3 is the purple, and R5 is the dark brown. Both of those zoning classifications have higher FARs as of right than the existing, than the C2 zoning for this site, which is a unique circumstance, the applicant did not create the zoning surrounding this property. In addition, the contamination, the soils underground, or in the soils underground parking is not practical. If it were, the site would qualify for a second density bonus for that enclosed parking. And as I had mentioned, two previous smaller-scale projects have been approved for the site, but have proven, partially have proven economically infeasible because of the soil conditions on the site. The comprehensive plan designates this site as urban neighborhood. Areas designated as urban neighborhood are predominantly residential with a range of densities, with highest densities generally concentrated around nodes and corridors. The site is located two blocks from Nicollet Avenue. Nicollet Avenue is a designated commercial corridor. The extent of the activity center, which is greater than this, but what is in the red or the commercial zoning, the C3, excuse me, zoning here, this is the boundary of the activity center, which it's the Eat Street Activity Center. It's 26th and Nicollet, and it stretches up and down Nicollet, and it comes that full block off of Nicollet. The plan policies for activity centers encourages the development of medium-to-high-density housing immediately adjacent to activity centers to serve as that transition. And the comp plan defines high density as 50 to 120 dwelling units per acre. The density of this site is 104, so it falls within that range for high-density housing as defined by the comprehensive plan. We do point out that this is not immediately adjacent to activity center boundary. It is half of a block outside of that activity center boundary. However, as you can see, all the way through the middle of the next block over, you have commercial zoning on that south side of 26th Street. And further, the site is located between that activity center boundary and then the two major institutions, MCAD and MIA, which are northeast of the site. And for those reasons, we are recommending approval of the variance to increase the FAR. The last application then before you tonight is the site plan review. The project does meet most of the site plan review standards. They do need alternative compliance for three items. First is the percentage of windows on the, all four sides, given streets and parking lot, all four sides of the building, I'm sorry, not this side, but all three of these sides require windows. This is the one area of the commercial portion facing that parking lot that doesn't have windows. We're recommending that they provide 10% windows. Back in this location, it would provide some eyes on the streets, or on the parking lot, excuse me. But then granting alternative compliance for the remainder of that is the 30% is what's The other two areas that need alternative compliance, is that 29% of the building franchise along Stevens has the active functions. From here over is active in the building. That's the workout room for the residents, and then the leasable commercial space in the corner. The rest is parking, which we did discuss with the committee the whole meeting, and because of the contamination and trying to meet the parking requirements, putting it inside the building was the way that they chose to accommodate parking on the site. We are recommending approval, or we are recommending that you grant alternative compliance for not meeting that 70%. They are meeting the full active functions along 26th. And then the last item that they need alternative compliance for is for a landscaping yard along the alley. I'm sorry, this is very small, so I'm going to see if I can zoom in for you. This is that site, and the alley is up. It's a five-foot yard in this area. They would need seven. These spaces are already compact. If we were, if they were to meet the seven feet, either the parking spaces would have to be eliminated, or they'd all need to be compact, and then a variance of the number of compact spaces would be required. So we are recommending approval of that. They do have landscaping and a fence in that location for screening of that parking lot from the properties across the alley. And then just additional conditions that we've added to the site plan is that they have a total of six canopy trees. We're recommending that they meet the canopy tree requirement. They do have a good variety of landscape species on the site, between perennial shrubs and evergreen ornamental and canopy trees. But they have five canopy trees, and we are recommending that they have six, and that does not include the trees that you see being added to the right-of-way. And then the landscape materials do need to grow to a height of six feet. Most of them do in the landscape beds, but for that screening requirement, they just need to relook at their landscaping. And then the last one is that they made that 10% window requirement in the commercial space facing the parking lot. So those are the applications and our conditions of approval.
Okay, Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Kronzer.
Hillary, I didn't see the extreme material percentage chart for facade in the staff report. Did I miss it, or do you have the breakdown?
I would have to check my files, now that you say that. I don't, I'm sure that the architect has that. Should have brought my color sample board. So the white base is the brick. The silver-gray color, that's the nichia panel. And then the blue at the base is a nichia panel. The blue up above, and now I feel like I'm getting that wrong, but maybe the architect can correct me if I am wrong, that is the nichia panel in these locations. And that's similar for all four sides.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions of staff? Commissioner Rockwell.
I've got a question about the density bonus that they can't get, developer cannot get for the underground parking, so serve a quirky question. So it's a 20% density bonus for, if they were able to put parking underground. So would that, if that were calculated, would that be 20% off of the initial 1.7? Or would it be compounded off of the 2.4, 2.04, sorry?
It's 20% on the 1.7, so it's .34 per bonus.
Okay, okay, got it. That answers that question. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Scott Nelson. I'm with DJR Architecture, and our, the developer Dan Olberbriller is here as well, if you have any questions. I'd just like to touch on a few things, and thanks to Hillary for working with us throughout this project. She did a really good job of explaining a couple of the challenges that we have in the site. It's the, dealing with the contaminated soil underneath limits somewhat what we can do with the parking and trying to get enclosed parking, and it also limits our ability to limit the floors. So we are really needing the five stories, and we are really needing the variance on the FAR. If we could get below-grade parking, we could actually go to four stories and also, excuse me, and also make the building work within the C2 FAR. Site sits in an area with lots of different uses and lots of different zoning, and I think the zoning map kind of identified how that works. I'd like to talk about a couple of things that we changed from the committee of the whole building, or committee of the whole meeting, relative to comments that we received from the planning commission. Maybe I'll just use the map that, or the plan that Hillary has out here right now. We increased some of the amenity spaces, and actually, this increased the FAR variance as well, because that decreases parking, which does not count into the FAR. We added space to both of the commercial spaces. We added a bicycle storage area and a workout room for the residents, and enlarged the, and moved out the, this leg of the building towards the parking lot some to increase the common area residence that the residents would have as well. That limited the parking a little bit. I think we heard some comments about trying to limit the overall parking, so we limited that down to 46, together with the outside. One of the, we've heard some comments and questions from different folks in the neighborhood concerned with traffic on the site, and whether or not this was intended to use the alley. You really don't want anyone to use the alley. We'd be willing to sign it to prevent the use of the alley, and it's definitely a two-way approach coming out of our open parking and the enclosed parking that'll take you out onto Stevens, which is a two-way street. 26th being a one-way, we feel is less likely to be used by most of the residents, especially those coming out of the garage. So we really, and we narrowed the drive a little bit, and Public Works in our meetings with PBR actually supported this, because it slows down traffic through there. Again, it's a very small parking garage and site parking in comparison to some others, so we, I think there's been some questions from the neighborhood if we could widen that. Public Works did not recommend we do that, but if someone felt we wanted to, we probably could. We've had several meetings with the neighborhood group as we've been discussing this. There's some differences of opinion, which I'm sure you'll hear at length soon. We've been very willing to work with them on various things, in terms of color, in terms of building materials. When we met at the committee of the whole meeting, there was some discussion, we had a little more colorful scheme at that time. I think there was some discussion that there were too many colors and too much going on on the building, so we made it a little more muted, still with the idea that we're trying to break up the facade into different pieces, especially on the 26th, on both the 26th and Stevens site, especially on the Stevens site. But we have been, again, more than willing to work with them with some different accent colors, or possibly some different materials, if that was something that we don't. We've also, we've also proposed adding a light feature to the top of the, to the top of the canopy, let's pull it on the bright side on the screen, that would help, as you came over 26th, there'd be kind of a, a little bit of a beacon. It would help support the notion of the gateway coming onto the project. Also like to make sure everyone understands that the depth of the building, or the height of the building is 61 just at the corners and 56 throughout. And I think Hillary may have misspoke briefly, the gray on the building is nichia. The blue is hardy panel. The white is brick. And there are, I think the ratios of the different materials were on the elevations, the black and white elevations in the design package. Yeah, so they're in the ballpark. But again, we're open to suggestions on, if there's different input on some different colors and things of that nature, and we're here for questions.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of the?
Just had a couple other questions I couldn't, looks like the rendering and the line elevation drawings are slightly off. The sill heights at the storefront, the first, the ground level, and the sill heights of the windows into the parking along Stevens keep, can you tell me what those are?
I think the sill height was, I think it's four feet, but then it has a little planter that sits below that. We want it to be high enough that it will block lights from cars, would be parking in the lot. We're looking at, are you talking about this sill right here in the parking garage? Yeah, that would be four feet.
Okay, and what about along 26th at the storefronts?
That's down to, that's down to like two feet or two foot four.
It looks a lot, if the renderings look a lot more like the right urban scale, and the line drawing seem to almost be like up at three feet.
They should, they should technically be the same.
You've got a, you've got a planter dimensioned at three feet along 26th, and it looks like the sills are even above that.
You're talking about this elevation right here.
You raised it up a bit.
Yeah. Talking about this elevation right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would probably like to make that like two foot four or something.
What's driving that dimension? A lot of storefronts are 18 inches.
Yeah, something to, something.
Okay, another question about, just kind of clarifying things, is on the site plan, it looks like there's some ground planting areas adjacent to the building. Yes, the renderings show a pretty nicely planted boulevard. Just wondering, what's the proposal?
I don't have a landscape plan. You're talking about this area right here along?
Yeah, there's another drawing out there that shows rectangles attached to the wall, building wall.
Or that's at the.
Well, just let me, what's the proposal?
We're going to have a landscape, this will be a, this will be a Blooming Boulevards like landscape strip through there. The trees will be in there, and Public Works, we actually, at the PDR meeting, the most involved person was from forestry, and wanted to keep a couple of the trees in front, and to do the planting on the boulevard side. and, and to do the planting on the boulevard side, not the, not the sidewalk side. We had a couple of different opinions on that. But it would be a continuous landscape strip with maybe a couple of areas to walk through.
Okay.
Planted with plant materials, not alone. That's the idea. If you want to clarify that in condition, that would be great.
I think you just clarified it. I think that's okay. And then I noticed not every unit has a balcony. Do you know what percentage of units have balconies?
I think we have 16 balconies.
16 out of 70?
Out of, wait a minute, we have one, two, 24. We have 24 balconies.
24. Is there a reason you don't have more?
They're there to break up parts of the elevation. Might be more, more of an aesthetic. It could be, it could be, but we definitely wanted to keep them on the outside faces of the building with most of the two bedrooms.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Rockwell.
Do you speak, so in our, in our staff packet, there were community concerns about the mix of unit types. So could you speak to the decision of, of the makeup of, you know, studios, one bedroom, two bedroom?
Okay, actually, one of the first meetings we had with the neighborhood, they expressed a desire to have some nicer units, some bigger, nicer units in the neighborhood. We kind of went in talking about this project being a little more of a workforce housing project with a little bit lower rents. So within the footprint, we went back and, and re-